G L J E F A thirty eight, session eighteen. Meetings of the Bertrand Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote through March thirty first, two thousand forty five. The agenda items listed are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by C T S B and the school committee recorder and other members of the public and will be broadcast. Once transcribed, approved minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So let's start with a roll call vote of school committee members. Bill Vol.
President.
Jason St. Peter.
Here.
Bonnie, have we seen Bonnie?
No.
No, okay. Sarah's not here, correct?
No, she's not.
And Anne's not. Bill Fields.
Here.
Diane Singer.
Yes.
Lori.
Here.
Rich.
Here.
And Steve, here. Perfect. We have in our packet the minutes of July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three to have a motion.
Seconded.
A motion by Rich, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? There are none, roll call, vote actually, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Diane?
Yes.
Lori.
Hi.
Rich, I, and I, it's unanimous. We'll go right into the super.
So we've got, but I think it's a media agenda and I want to get to Kevin and his team. But with our students here and some new staff and I want to get to that too. So we're going to start with our typical roses and horns are good and challenging news. And we'll start with Katie at the elementary school and then work our way up.
So we have a really good opening. I think we have had personal development already, science and reading. And we submitted these were assessments that were going to take this first round of the assessment. We had a L G B T Q R K plus awareness training. It was invaluable to stay up. We were the leaders of getting over some ways to show that we're accepting. We have been putting on the diaper house, looking from five to seven.
One thing that's coming up is to get in feedback from our audience that our audio is not great. So everybody needs to speak up a little bit and we'll see what else.
I think if you're not at the table, come to the table and speak.
And actually, Kevin, your sound being right next to that, that way happens.
All right, Miles.
So we do have a great looking. Do really productive staff meeting days where we are planning on using a data cycle from office here to student data and food instruction. We step those rounds of that data cycle with our staff actually looking at some of the data the teachers gave for one of their staff survey. Last year, we're ourselves and we do their administrative work also as a whole school community. It's really nice to have students staff really again. Couple of events coming up in the next week. We have a family program resource fair. Our family group has reached out to a lot of community organizations. Parks and museum, the South, River Street, and our community, a lot of different opportunities for students to get connected with resources for children and activities for families to do here in South County. Together with middle school, this coming Wednesday, we'll teach. And then we have our meeting teachers, meeting teams rather, open house event on Tuesday the nineteenth. It was important that. Many of the community organizations do have programs for the students as well, but not as focused on the community.
We have a resource there. And we love the. Last year, that's been for a while. And I just didn't know that that was a project. Decision.
Yeah, they were chosen from our student council. And our student council has not started yet. The student council starts when we were first actually selected representative members to come to.
Okay. And May, are you excited? Do you think that the next thing that Chris will offer you?
Yeah. So to start off, it's on the back, I'm raising on the way. An auction, and on my auction, it's an ice and metal cooler. Opening and selling the hats again during the football game, those were a big hit. And then our first stall meeting is on the eleventh. There's a few committees. We should be there next week. I'm not really sure about that. Class, there's a class of things to advise, so. We all meet together in our dorm room, we have a grade, and we go. So my grade had the senior summit this year, and this day. And even those were privileges, we went on our school worms and yeah, it was really informative. And then there was also a senior quality planning rate on the eleventh. I'm not sure what goes on on that. I'm gonna go and find out. We have a club there next to the state, so each club is going to have a little table with sign sheets. We get students who are involved in our school. There is some fall sports, there is, I think, two games, the rain goes volleyball and soccer, and then tomorrow's our first football game. And then now there are baby detectors in the bathroom, which improved the situation a lot. What used to happen was students would all gather together at one stall, the mini stalls, ten people to a stall, and it was brushing, like to use the restroom. So that quickly cuts down on addiction as well as students doing these bathrooms. And then our only theme this week is maybe at school, I mean, at school. If you need a song, teacher. Yeah.
So I predict it's going to rain this afternoon and this problem will be resolved tomorrow, at least until next May. So one thing, I keep getting feedback from our home audience that is sounding a little like Charlie Brown. So if you have a phone on the table, you could put it in your pocket or away from the owl, so. All right. Chrissy, do you guys want to go ahead?
Yeah, I just want to add two more things. One, I'm excited to say that as of this week, we can build over teaching and professional staff, community positions. We still have three professional positions we're trying to fill. And then I just also want to add that also on September eleventh, right before the senior college planning, we will be having our first meeting of the year without parent community advisory groups. So we are hoping what will join us for that, and we're excited to start those conversations back.
Great, so what I'm going to do now is introduce two people. I was going to introduce three, but one of them's under the weather, so she'll come to the next meeting. But I want to start with Peter Nergio and I keep getting this feedback about our feedback on the sound. So if people are coming up to speak, I'll just have them sit at the end, so you're right next to the owl. So we'll start with Peter. Peter's coming to us as our new assistant principal at high school. And we actually call him Peter Pete because we all have the same name and it's getting. And it seemed inappropriate to call me Pete, so maybe I wish I'd gone back to that. That's what they used to call me when I was in high school. So welcome. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself, what's going on, I'm looking forward to working on.
Sure. I'm a thirty year educated. I just, I started off as a hundred years ago. I've been an assistant principal for twenty years in Westfields. And here I am at a high school. Most of my time is spent at a middle school. And I am enjoying so much. This sounds cliche, but the warm welcome that I've received from the, not only the seniors, but all the kids. And it sounds so simple, but kids saying, so you're the new assistant principal? Oh, hey, my name is Troy, or my name is Lily, or, and they reach their hand out and shake my hands. I'm just so impressed with, with the kids and the warm welcome. Awesome, man. I have a family in Westfield, I have three adult children and a wife, and we need forty-five minutes out here and I'm looking forward to the winter commute. A few people have told me, run Blanford, it's kind of tough, but we'll figure it out. A few things I've talked with Ms. Farina about, and I'm going to put a focus on, one is student attendance. And I've, in combination with Martha Escobar, apparently is, I've been reaching out to some families, in particular E L families. Trying to get kids who have not shown up yet to show up and from there we're going to have to figure out why they're not showing up. Another thing I'm focusing on is responsiveness back to the staff. There are situations that an assistant principal will deal with, having to do with kids. And I told the staff, the first day I was able to speak with them, I have no secrets. I want to be transparent with them and I want to get back to them after I hear or after I meet with kids or with families and put them in. So that was the second thing. And then the third thing is just teacher observation and evaluation. We want to make that an effective tool to help the teachers. Not a gotcha, but something that helps us all get better.
Great. Any questions for you?
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. So the next person I'd like to bring up is Myra Ricepot. And Myra's joining us is our D E I B school culture coordinator. And like Pete, I'm super excited for Myra to be here. She just started. Tuesday, right? Just started Tuesday. So Myra, tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're starting to work on.
Thank you for the welcoming. I feel that, same like Peter described, the welcoming, the meeting faces, meeting students, and stuff like that. I've been working in education for fifteen years and before that I used to tutor students from B C C when they were taking Spanish classes. I am an immigrant who came from Ecuador. I've been in this area for. I used to live in Queens, New York, and then I came here and liked the peacefulness and the small communities that I feel like. I have two kids. I live in Milton. And also my mom is working for the district. And she is currently working with students who also with translations. I have been working with Miles in the middle school. I was before working with the principals in middle schools. I have meetings with several professionals, students, teachers about ways to improve what we currently do in the district for diversity, equity, inclusion, and learning. It seems like there are a lot of good programs going on for the students, which is really good to see. I also know that my position is new for the district and that I want to do and look forward to.
These questions from Myra, I'm a little hard because it's three days in, right? One of the things we spend a lot of time looking at together is the study report and sort of that as a launchpad and blueprint for that. So in the next couple of months, Myra will be talking to everybody, getting a lot of information and then coming back with. With. Thanks.
Thank you.
Right? Thanks, Myra. So the last person, Beth Cook, she'll come at our next meeting. And she's our former science teacher, now instructional coach. So the last thing before the communication study report. I mentioned previously that I applied for DESI for that grant around cell phones and electronics. We were eligible for twenty-five dollars, but that's twenty-five dollars. That's good, so we'll use that on our work there. Importantly, I wanted people to start school and get focused on the start of school. But in the coming weeks and months, I've got a couple of really nice surveys, one for parents and families and one for staff and one for students. And I think we'll use those to gather some information and then we'll hold some. In-stool conversations and some community. Figure out the. And that's a DESI grant. So sitting next to me is Kevin. On the line is Luke Mike. And their team is bigger than the two of them, but they're speaking on a half the team. I'm going to throw up the presentation that at least many of the school committee members read. And this is sort of slay. But we're all doing PowerPoint stuff all the time and explain to people what this is and why this is sort of.
Okay, so it's just a summary of the volumes of paper that you have in front of you, just to help guide the discussion tonight. And it's just a tool we use called Quiller that is really like instantly creating a little mini website that's scrollable. So that you're not clicking something, just then we can just scroll through it and just hit the high points. We use this a lot. It just seems to be a much easier way. It updates automatically, so if you guys want to take this and use this somewhere else and you've got edits to it after tonight, we can make those on the fly and they can show up instantly. So Peter engaged with us back in January and. With the goal of knowing that the school committee wanted to see some work done around communicating more effectively with our audiences. And tasked us with that, so we're not doing that. And the goals that we came up with were really to improve the quality and the availability and ease of access to information. Because sometimes you have all the right information, it's just not packaged right and it's not available where people think it should be. So we spent a lot of time looking at that and really looking at the audiences that you're communicating with and trying to understand how they want to receive information. Not just how we want to push it out to them, but how do they want to receive? Where are they looking for, what tools are they using? And the goal is to increase awareness and understanding and engagement and support throughout the district. And then also to create new assets and processes and efficiencies along the way that enable the highest and best use of available resources. Whether that's line items in the budget or human resources, people's time and attention. And allow teachers and parent professionals to really focus more on student success and not managing lots of different communications activities that may really need to be somebody else's. So our scope of work was from January through May, we did what we call discovery process. We went through all the websites, you know, the fine tooth comb. We looked at similar school websites. Peter had recommended a couple that he liked. We looked at those and figured out what they were doing differently or better. We reviewed all the communications assets that we currently have. And what are all those channels, Parents Square, newsletters that go out, social media accounts that either are official school accounts? Or you've also got a lot of teachers and staff that were on their own accounts at the school. Rogue from the district, but still really valuable to the communications process for the particular audiences. So we tried to sort of herd all those cats and really see what that universe was like. And in June, we did some online surveying and focus groups and that's, Mike really led that process for us. Where we sent, we came up with four different audiences and customized surveys for each one of those audiences and got a pretty good response. We also did focus groups for each one of those spaces as well. And we took all that information and pushed it down through the phone to see what the insights were. Where people were, what their points of pain were, the communications process, but also what they liked and what they felt didn't need to be changed. And then we spent the last couple of months putting together our recommendations. Or categorizing things in three different areas, medium and high. Really emphasizing those high priority stuff. We'll think of any of those flows from that. We do have the key takeaways in here, but. Yeah, I think let's open up the high priorities. So the first one, and this came from the focus groups and the surveying, was rebuild the websites. People like the websites as a source of information, but are frustrated where they don't know quite where to find information. So they want to see the websites rebuilt and see them work together. You know, you have many parents who have more than one child in the district, it might be at different schools. They're going all over the place trying to find information, they don't know if it's on the website, it's on Square, if they find it on a Facebook page. So they want some organizational structure and across all audiences that we spoke with and surveyed, the website was the websites were the number one issue that they wanted to address. And we put together a whole bunch of recommendations of how to approach that. We need to build it through. So the second recommendation was to make a deeper commitment to Parents Square. The tool, it's a reputable tool, it has a lot of value, it has a lot of functionality, both parents. And we spoke to some parents that were sort of heavy users of it, were frustrated that there wasn't more content and more information because they thought that that was a great hub for parents to use. And staff felt as well that there wasn't enough in there, there weren't enough people using it, so they weren't sure if that was the right place to communicate things. And do we use Parents Square, do we use the website? So you know, part of our proposal to you is integrated. Parents Square has the functionality to be integrated into the website. And so people can go to the website, the website becomes your hub, they can launch and access Parents Square from the website. They're not two separate things where people don't know where the information lives. Because they can come to the website and they can access both tools in the same place. And that deeper commitment requires some, it may require a little bit of budget to increase the content that's in there and the functionality. There may be features and functions that you aren't using with a subscription. But there's also some additional training to really, and this is one of the biggest barriers to effective use of technology, is workflow and training. You got to build it into everybody's workflow so they're used to it, it becomes an essential tool to them. And then they have to really understand what it can do and what information is in there that's relevant to them. And so there's some more investment in training. And then the third thing that ties this all together is hiring a communications director to manage all this stuff. You're going to need somebody to manage the website rebuild process. We're going to need somebody who is responsible for your social media accounts, who is responsible for updating the website once it's built. And that's, that is not an uncommon problem, particularly for school districts. You know, if you, you guys, what's your budget? So thirty-three million dollar corporation has an entire corporate communications team that is updating the website constantly and managing their social media accounts. And you guys don't have anybody on the set to dedicate. So I think creating that position to get, dedicate somebody to overseeing all of those communication functions and creating an integrated plan that allows them to work together. And making sure that there's updated content. That one person can't do it all, but they can coordinate it. They can pull in more people, more stakeholders to contribute contents. And we talked about that in detail in the tour. I think the important thing here is there are a few different ways to approach hiring somebody. You can, we draft a position description for you, it's in there. You can use that, post that, hire somebody externally, do a job search and bring them on staff full time with salary and benefits. That's probably your most expensive approach. You can also hire an independent contractor, at least a contractor in the first year. We recommend that it's not us. We feel like it needs to be somebody who is familiar with the community, maybe somebody that's already connected to the district. Could be a super engaged parent that is looking to reenter the workforce or switch jobs. Could be an alumnus of the school who has professional expertise or academic training in those communication fields. And that gives you the flexibility of really working with an independent contractor for a year to sort of design everything and get everything in place and to see how it goes. And then there's no, there's no long-term obligation. After that first year, you can sort of reassess, you can convert them to a fourth year if you wanted to. But it gives you a little bit more flexibility than making a good commitment. Or you could restructure an existing employee's job responsibilities. And I think the example I use here is you've got a librarian who runs a really popular Instagram account. Several people in the focus group and surveys reference to us. So that's somebody that's sort of, you know, already done on the job training and has an investment in their schooling in the district. And those folks in the district already could hit the ground running. And that may, that may be an opportunity to sort of reevaluate that position and update it. So I think those are, those are three options to consider when hiring a position. And you know, if budget is a consideration, you can make a half time or three quarter time position in your room. I think you have some flexibility in that. So those three things really tie together, right? Website rebuild, integrating Parents Square, hiring somebody to manage it all, that's kind of a bundle. And that's why those three things are all. The medium priority stuff, you know, really creating our communications roadmap, right? So some of the feedback we got was the district does a really great job about communicating emergency information and bad news and that kind of comes from the top end. Sometimes at the school level, they're not sure which tool they should be using and what the, what the protocol is. Do we need to wait for Peter to send something out? Does he contact us before it goes out? So they just want sort of a clear set of protocols and guidelines for what types of information do we communicate through, which. what types of information do we communicate through which channel? And that's something that a new communication manager could help sort out. Work through the different schools and work through Peter's. And then updating, refining the emergency communications team that we already have. And updating it so that there's just clear understanding of the sales procedure. And then the low priority item, there were quite a few folks that had an issue with the voicemail system. They found it really clunky and cumbersome to use and hard to access emails. So we put that in there as a literary, but felt like we heard it enough that it was was worthy of making it into the document. So I want to pause there and just see what questions you have.
One of my first questions is just about the medium priority roadmap. Are you considering all the merit of starting there? Because I feel like in some way, not being that out and where we want to go, then it would better in terms of who we want for a position in communication, where we want the website to look like, et cetera. It would almost be more important to get that. My belief is to have ready information in the document. It would be more important to have that focus and the other things. One question.
Yeah, so we didn't only because we felt like, one, the website was a high enough priority that it's going to take some time to rebuild those websites. Now that we're, should start this new process. And two, that having the communications person in place to participate in that process of putting together the roadmap would be really valuable to them effectively doing their job rather than having them come in and having Peter hand them, here's a roadmap that we developed. And I just go, you didn't hear you're responsible for the new ones. That was the reason.
And given, I mean, that we know, we know new ones, the website, we have a communication manager that's still standing there. Are there any low hanging fruit that might be low in priority items, but that people could be done quickly and should be done? And one thing, I thought the insights were great, but we're afraid to think about those. Something that I think maybe would just, oh, it sounds like a lot of parents wondering where they're going to get their communication. And the idea that we're getting a pool of each building, which is going down with parents. This is how we should be doing the communication and that, I would think, is something that's a little bit of a disease without all the other stuff. Is there anything other things that could be implemented right away?
Yeah, I think in the short term, we could update parents on here's where you can find this information. I think the one pitfall with that is there was a lot of feedback that the right information isn't on the website or the websites don't update the information. One of the big things with the website was the counter information. Where people just don't know where to find what's happening, right? So I think you can update them on where to find certain pieces of information to refer to them with a caveat that not everything's going to be exactly what it is.
Are there other things to add?
Yeah, so I'll draw your attention to page 28. At the start of 28, towards the bottom. So we talk about, once a communication manager position is established, we recommend the following ideas for optimizing communication activity activities. Some of these things can be done in advance of a communication manager. So just let me just scan through these. So you can certainly start to develop a network of contributors. So we talk about, you know, the superintendent admin staff. You know, one of the suggestions we had is, you know, have, have, you know, someone on Peter's staff, create a superintendent's set, you know, monthly, seven top things that are really newsworthy that we want the entire community and all of us to happen in the district. And that's something that could be pushed out through social media channels and school newsletters. As an email from Peter's office, you could even create a press release and send it to local media and highlight some of those. And it also, you know, sort of builds a little bit loud because within those seven things, some might be recognition of status, some might be recognition of somebody, a parent that volunteered to do something, some might be a student achievement. You could mix up, so you've got something that's relevant to all audiences. So that doesn't need to wait. You know, it would be helpful to have someone in place to manage all that. But that's certainly something we can have. And contacting teachers and staff and clubs and school activities and coaches. They're the greatest source of content to share about what's going on in the school, positive news. And we see this a lot with even our corporate teams. It's really, their staff are doing newsworthy things every day. They just don't realize that it's newsworthy. They need somebody to ask them, what are you working on right now that might be newsworthy to people outside of your office or your school or that the community might want to know about? And nine times out of 10, they'll say, oh yeah, we did this, 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 and this. Well, that's great. So if there's a, if there's a process where they can submit that content proactively once a month and say, hey, here are three highlights that we have this week. And start to get them in that workflow of a monthly basis of the email, somebody and tell them what's new or what's new. And maybe that's something that flows through the principal of the school or the assistant principal. You know, formalizing some sort of student involvement in the communications process. Make them, create a student committee that's responsible for social media posts. Let them design the posts, use their creativity to do some graphic design around posts. It's not just a content post. You can, you know, give them great experience, you know, they can use that on college applications. So I think some of those things are things that can be done pretty quickly.
I think you've, I can't hear your comments in the report, but just to be clear is how confident are you in our continuing reliance on Parents Square going forward? Like the next five or 10 years? Do you think that's a good tool?
We do. Yeah, we think it's, it seems to be one of the top tools to use in K through 12 school districts. And they do have a lot of impressive functionality, right? You know, some of that stuff is à la carte and add-on and it might, you know, increase your monthly subscription fee. But they, they seem to provide a decent amount of support. And they have lots of training resources on their website, videos. You can schedule, they have monthly training sessions that anybody can sign up for and sit in on. So I feel like it has the capacity to grow with your needs. And it's not, it's not going anywhere, right? Which is always a risk, right? Invest in something new and then it goes, right?
Yeah.
Goes away.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
This is really, the report's excellent. Excellent.
We appreciate the opportunity to work with you. And we'll look forward to hoping to see some of this kind of fruition.
All right, so we're going to transition to
Yeah, I think we got to have like, however you want to bring it forward, Peter, but I'd like to have conversations about addressing through high priority items as soon as possible in this fiscal year. And I'm not putting you on the spot now to talk about that, but I think we got to like move to that. That phase very rapidly.
Very much so. And we had an ad hoc communications group who got us to this point. It might make sense to schedule a meeting with that group to do a little thinking. Like I'll do some work in advance of that meeting, but to do a little thinking together and then come back to the bigger group with some thoughts on that.
Yeah, my only thought on that, and I agree with Rich, is from my experiences, it takes us a year to do a website and we get a great one as opposed to six months and get an okay one. I'm fine with that too.
But if it's going to be a year, we can't start a year from now.
No, I agree. I'm agreeing with you, but I, but we've tried websites to redesign websites and we've always come up with slightly better than we had. And I think this time let's try to get a lot better than that.
I feel like on the website front, all three of the major fronts, they not only told us what to do, but they gave us tools how to do it, which I haven't been able to add before, so.
So I'll reach out to the ad hoc subcommittee and come up with a little quickie plan to move things forward. So the next thing I wanted to do was bring JP back. We met JP, I think, formulate the last meeting. And now he's here talking about like rebranding and relaunching to share the opportunities around
Out of school time.
Out of school time. Got too many things going on. So JP picked another approach to share, which I will share in a sec. Just give me a sec.
To hire a communications person, it might be helpful for you to have them come to our meetings and run some of this.
They're all of it. And I'll see, I mean, it's like the work that's being done by the people is costing us more money than this is going to cost.
Yes, great.
So I've been here since the end of April, beginning of May, so just about four months. And we've accomplished a lot in that time. So our new after-school program has been branded CLEO, Community Learning Enrichment Opportunities. It was very, very important to us that the word opportunity was prominent. This entire program is about providing opportunities to students that they might not otherwise have. We have developed a new mission, which is slightly different than, than the previous one. Again, focusing largely on providing opportunities for students. Academic intervention and advancement was very important to the people we talked to. Extending school day learning, we want to make sure that we're aligned with what is happening during the school day and in communication with the faculty. Developing social emotional learning was also one of the top priorities. So that's where we're focusing our attention. And that's how we ended up with community learning and enrichment. Those three things are represented there. Just as an interesting little piece of trivia, the Greek goddess Cleo was the muse of history and the celebrator of great accomplishments. We did not know that when we chose the name. But it was a happy accident, so I'll take it. I just thought that was kind of fun to discover after the fact. So our, we've identified the goals for the first year. First and foremost, we needed to align our hours and our deliveries with what the state was expecting us to do. I spent a lot of time looking at old data, talking to the state, finding out what they wanted from us. And since they're giving us a lot of money, I thought it was important to do that. We wanted to look at increasing student engagement, community and personal growth. We're aligning the SCL expectations across programming. There's a term that you're going to hear thrown around a lot around out of school time. It's called SAO, which stands for Student Academic Youth Outcomes. That is the data gathering mechanism that the state uses for out-of-school programming. We wanted to increase consistency of attendance. We wanted to make sure that we were collecting useful data throughout the year to support the existing data goals within the schools, but also to make sure that we were developing a program that understood itself. And we wanted to make sure that we were stabilizing our infrastructure and spending around this program. It's been a little bit all over the map at this point. So here's what we've done so far in the first four months. We assessed current state. We did a lot of surveys. I did a lot of talking with the state, looked back at historical data, talked to the principals, talked to the vice principals, talked to the students, got a lot of info from parents, looked at other programs. So we kind of needed to, we spent basically the first two months just figuring out what have we got? That was May and June, which then allowed us to then go into summer, piloting some interesting new ideas, some of which turned out to be pretty cool. And we're definitely going to be looking at. We've built a new schedule. One of the biggest pieces of feedback we got from parents was they did not like the breaks in the programming. So we will be starting on September 25th. And we will, every day there is school, except for Fridays, we will continue all the way through to the middle of June. So that will offer some more consistency to the parents. And of course, we did go through a rebranding process. This is the, this is the new website. It is linked to the BHRSD website. I was giggling a little bit when they were talking about finding things because the only place you find it is if you go to the schools and pull down to out-of-school time programming. My biggest accomplishment in the last two days was getting the URL to actually be the nice and simple bhrsd.org/cleo. So, you know, little victories.
People had trouble having, doing similar tasks in past, so I'm
So yeah, let me go back to, sorry, the slideshow. This was easier to do when I was not on Zoom at the same time. Okay, there we go. So we've done some rebranding. Going into this school year, we are planning on piloting what we're calling activity stations in the elementary school. One of the things we found is that we really needed, students have to be there according to the state at least two hours after school. That is a long time for a kid that has just sat in a classroom for six hours. So we're breaking up all of the afternoon programming into some smaller chunks. So the elementary school will be starting with what we call activity stations. And that will be student choice. This was something we piloted during the summer. And these are short activities that last a single day in a variety of media. The activities that we have so far were developed mostly by our high school interns. So this was a double win for us in that we were providing our elementary students with some valuable engagement. But we were also developing the skills of our high school interns. So that's definitely a project that we tried over the summer that we're pretty excited about, that we're going to keep doing. We are going to be piloting academic intervention at the middle school. I noticed in your packet, this flow chart got sort of mangled. But basically, again, breaking the day up into some significant chunks. We really wanted to help our middle school students take responsibility for monitoring their own academic standing. So every day we'll begin with a personal check of current standing. We've been discussing with the teachers and with Miles about the best way to do that. There's inconsistent use around Power School and Google Classroom and so forth. So we're still trying to figure out the best way to determine what is good academic standing. But most importantly, we want the students to take the responsibility for that check themselves. If they are not meeting their expectations, they would spend the first 45 minutes of after-school doing some sort of intervention. That will be tutoring. That will be some online coursework. It'll be anything we can think of that might work. We're going to be inviting teachers to come in during that time if they wish to. You know, I could see a scenario where I'm a seventh grade math teacher and I really need to spend some time with this kid who's struggling in my class. Oh, look, I see they're enrolled in CLEO. I'm going to show up on Wednesday and sit down with them for that 45 minutes. So we're working really hard to create the space, create the container where that sort of intervention can happen in a meaningful way. We're piloting it at the middle We're piloting it at the middle school for a variety of reasons, most of which Miles was very excited about it. And that happens to be where my office is. It's also where my experience is. The vast majority of my twenty years in education has been at the middle school, so I went with what I knew. We're hoping if this goes well, that this is something that we can duplicate across the district. If you are doing well, you have two options. If you are running a two hour program, and there are some programs that do make sense, I mean, it's hard to do ceramics for twenty minutes, you know. The ceramics teacher wants to keep the kids as long as possible. So if you are in a two hour program, you go to that program and stay there until five oh five. Otherwise, we're going to have some choice activities similar to what I just described with the with the elementary school. Something that might change day to day involving the kids, engaging them. And then they go to a program for the last hour that is a consistent, more traditional course. So that that's something that we're piloting at the middle school that we're very excited about. That should be a big hit for us on the academic side. We are looking to expand the use of our high school interns as tutors, coaches, and teacher aides. Interestingly, what we have found is that the high school interns tend to be some of our most reliable and engaging employees. So again, win win, we get to, not in any way diss the adults in the room, but like, you know, high schoolers generally don't have sick kids and things like that. So we are looking to expand the use of those high school interns, particularly in the tutoring arena. One of the things that I have found as an educator is that if I'm a seventh grader and I'm struggling with math, I'm much more likely to listen to a tenth grader who is sitting exactly where I was three years ago, who was also struggling with math, than I am to listen to somebody with a master's degree in math. That's where tutoring can really make a difference for a kid who just hates school. So we want to make sure that we're utilizing our high school interns for that. We also want to make sure that we're providing some first language tutoring. It's hard enough to learn math, learning math while you're translating it is is a challenge. So we want to make sure that that we're gonna be providing that as well. Sorry. One of the one of the first things that we that we recognized is that there was very little communicated to instructors about what we were expecting from them. And thus, they weren't delivering what we were expecting. So we have developed this this activity planner that allows the instructors to really choose and focus their attention on the SAO outcomes that we are looking for. And we instruct them to choose a few of these that they are really going to focus on and reinforce that behavior within their program. We're also looking for some consistency in course structure, making sure that students are entering to welcoming and engaging routine, having some sort of introduction. All of our students are gonna be working on some mindfulness activities. Self-regulation was one of the goals for all of the principals. Doing some activities and then keeping the kids engaged. So this document is a document that I or lead teacher or Dr. Dillon or one of the principals or anybody could pick up this document, walk into an after school activity and say, what am I looking for here? Oh, you know, we were looking at reinforcing how well students cooperate. I look, I see students cooperating in the classroom, yay, that's a good win. I was, you know, we were, this teacher said they wanted to look for, they wanted to focus on forming friendships with with a variety of peers. I don't see a lot of that happening. Kids are clicked off. So we want a document that that lets us know if we're doing what we set out to do on a regular basis. So that's going to be a hopefully a game changer for us. Whoops, sorry. I mentioned self-regulation is gonna be in all of our courses. There's gonna be time set aside for specific mindfulness activities. We're also gonna be adding student led clubs at the middle school. One of the things that left out at us at the Stoke report was the need for some affinity groups. And that seemed like a really obvious win for 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 our program. So we are gonna be piloting some clubs at the middle school this year. And we're looking to get our own house in order and make sure that we are clear as to how our program works, making sure that we don't have redundant positions, making sure that we're spending money where it's gonna do kids the most good. So so that's sort of where we are headed. Just to let you know some of the things that we have accomplished already. I wanted to share some summer results with you. The the four SAO outcomes that we were looking for this summer were engagement, relationship with peers, communication, and self-regulation. I'm happy all of those numbers are positive. They were not at the end of the school year. So this actually, although these are modest gains, represents a real turnaround from where we were at the end of this school year. Those four SAO outcomes at the end of the school year were actually negative across the board. Students actually went backwards according to that outcome, or according to that that particular measurement. Again, that's one measurement, not the end all be all, but that's the one the state looks at. I was also pretty pleased with the attendance during summer. At the elementary school, we had eighty eight percent attendant, average attendance rate, eighty percent.
The summer story, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I mean, and and keep in mind that these averages include things like a kid who showed up four times out of twenty. So especially at at Muddy Brook, we had a tremendous number of kids who were there each and every day without fail, and and that's because they were excited to be there. It was not just because their parents made them. So, yeah, those were those were very, very rewarding numbers for us. That's, I wanted to keep this under ten minutes and I blew that. My apologies. Never give a teacher a slideshow and an open time frame.
Do we have any questions?
Questions?
I'm just gonna ask in regards to attendance.
Yes.
Can kids after school like only go once a week or twice a week? Or, and I ask that because my grandson worked in a program very much like this in Springfield this summer. And they had a requirement that you had to attend seventy days.
Yes.
And actually, in some cases, the principal of the school assigned kids to join this group, or else you'll have trouble coming back to school in the fall. And so, you know, he didn't like that because it wasn't really voluntary.
Yeah.
And so is there a state requirement that kids have to attend like four, three oh five?
There is a state requirement that if you are participating in in the Twenty First Century Funding Model, that students need to attend for a minimum of two days a week, for a minimum of two hours each of those days. I vehemently am opposed to telling a kid they have to. That's 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 a that's a culture killer.
We agree.
So, but we are going to to say to folks, when you sign up, we do expect you to attend. We will be taking attendance. If you are not attending, we are gonna be letting your parents know, hey, you signed up for this and you're not here. What's going on? And in a worst case scenario, if somebody is just consistently not attending and it doesn't seem to bother them any, then we'll give their seat to somebody else. You know, there there are only so many slots and we need to help as many kids as we can.
So is there self-selection? How how do kids get into this?
So how do kids get into this? There there will be, there will be a signup sent out within the next few days for the fall session. Parents enroll, which is their student. If we have more students to try to enroll, then we have slots. Then we go to a waiting system, W E I G H T system, in which we do give priority to certain populations. And again, this is dictated by the funding. Our our prioritization is based on, we need to first and foremost make sure that we are including students who are economically disadvantaged. The purpose of the funding is to close the opportunity gaps.
Do teachers assign their students? Or is it just parents?
The 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 parents enroll their students. That I am opposed, I mean, a teacher can certainly suggest it, but I'm opposed to a teacher telling a student, you have to stay after and and do this after school program. It is voluntary, yes.
Is this done by semesters or is it a whole year? Because what if a student wishes to participate in sports in a spring semester, but this program?
Yeah, we are, we are aware of that. And particularly at the high school, we're gonna be trying to align with the fall, winter, spring sports program. So the first, our first session starts September twenty fifth and it'll run to the beginning of winter break. It made sense to us that that was a logical stopping point, both for the fall sports, but also because it's winter break. It it would be really hard for us to get kids to come for a week or two in in January after they've had their break. So that seems like a good time to start something new.
And you've got all the other programs besides sports, after school, and high school, Shakespeare, and the fall.
Exactly. Yeah, there it's, I mean, there is no way to align everything. We're trying to be as flexible as we possibly can. To that end, we actually haven't scheduled out the the remainder of the year yet. We just scheduled for fall. We wanna see how that goes.
Go ahead.
It sounds like signup is happening very soon.
Very soon.
What are the plans for communication, given that this is kind of a rebranding and given that it's in a much kind of more strict interpretation of, I think, what the program probably was always intended to be, but how do you quite measure that? It would be important to get that messaging right to the parent population especially.
Yeah. So I've already sent out at least one notification on Parents Square. I am going to be sending out more notifications on Parents Square. We built the website. I'm getting at least three calls a day and I'm directing them to the website and to Parents Square. Answered a question, of course, but trying to teach them to fish. And we've also been working with Marta Escobar to make sure that we are reaching out to our ELL population as well, sometimes directly, and that we're translating everything. The signup, the signup, the enrollment sheet, as much as possible, the questions in the enrollment are going to make it clear what our expectations are. You know, I'm not just gonna say.
Right, because to me, it's the why that's so important that they understand. It's not just like, we just dreamed this up to be more restricted or to be more viewed or to be just to have rules on top of rules, but this is just, this is the state.
Yes.
Helping us.
Well, this is the state telling us, but also it's, you know, for the, when you are enrolling in a program, it has a beginning, a middle, and an end, and you need to have the full experience to have the full experience. And it's, you know, it's simply not fair to the instructors for a kid to show up one day and not another day and then say, what do we do? You know, that's just not reasonable. Kid is sick, kid is sick. And the first thing that we do, that we'll be doing when we take attendance is we'll check the school's attendance and see if the kid was at school that day. Kid was out, we certainly don't expect them to come in for our program. Kid was at school and decided to blow out the after school, we're gonna ask some questions.
Anyone else?
Just a quick, I don't want to do this too much, but it does come a point where all the slots are filled and we have to start rejecting some students that kind of like know that at a school level. Because ideally, you know, I'd like an inclusive program, not something that could potentially be exclusive. It's kind of going through, especially, you know, getting away too much, but at these clubs that you were, you know, talking about, that might be very important to these students. If, again, reading it, the two people who get bumped to the top of the list if they're economically disadvantaged or if you're an English language learner, just schedule it. So just say someone doesn't meet those two, but, you know, maybe is one of the involved club, like the B I P O C or L G B Q clubs, but they don't, for whatever reason, get in. You know, I would wanna know that, you know, be have that aware, especially if that club really takes off and they're not, that's not available to them. So I guess, you know, I don't wanna create problems with those not already, but if we do reach a point where all the slots fill up and there's students wanting to join at the school, we don't have to.
Absolutely, and that that is one of the reasons too that we're gonna be piloting the clubs at the middle school. As Miles and I have already talked about, who's paying for for what? And the the beautiful thing about this program is that going forward, the the kids shouldn't worry about who's paying for it. And if a club is being funded by the district or a club is being funded by the Twenty First Century Grant, the kid doesn't need to know which is which. But for the Twenty First Century Grant, we have priorities that we need to hit. For the district, we do not necessarily have those priorities. So, for example, you know, a a a club that was made up entirely of, for lack of a better descriptor, low priority kids, maybe the district is paying for that club out of the 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 club funding that we've already set aside. And again, the kids don't need to know who's paying for what, that's not their problem. But we wanna make sure that after school is for everybody and that if there's a demand, it is met. And that we can do that if we're creative about who's paying for what. Can you kind of the school committee be able to meet those?
Right, I don't like to measure us, yes. Anybody that wants to participate in just about anything should be able to do it, but how it's funded might be different.
Right, exactly. And again, I I could see a scenario in which, Peter and I are sitting next to each other in the exact same after school program and my seat is being paid for by this brand and his seat is being paid for by a completely different brand. That that's our goal. I I honestly, until people start signing up next week, I have no idea.
That's why I didn't make a new point.
And and so just to compare, when we first got the grant fourteen or thirteen years ago, it was wide open and there were no priorities. And sort of everybody got a little spoiled around that, and then the priorities changed. JP and I talked a lot about that, and from a kid and family perspective, we wanted to be seamless. And and parents and families shouldn't have to worry about how it's supported. That's the job of us, fine.
For JP or for Kate or for both of you, but just in terms of, you mentioned the whole piece around inclusion and I have kids that are on IEP and Bible Core, the fact that fatigue and interactions, that could be difficult. Or is that on your plate at all to kind of brainstorm other ways to make that more inclusive for them?
Yeah, Kate Kate and I have already had several discussions about that. Because, again, there are resource issues. There are capacity issues. And and, you know, for some kids, it's it's not to their benefit to hang around for another two hours. They may just need to go home and rest. I mean, if they've been spending every ounce of energy they have and sitting in a seat all day and desperate to get out and bounce, hopefully, we'll have some programs where they can get out and bounce. Or, but they might, but it might be better for them to go home. We, you know, we can't make that decision. Um we, you know, we can't make that decision for them. That that has to be the parents' decision.
Okay.
Thanks, yeah, thanks, J P, it's really thoughtful.
Thank you.
Um so.
Fingers crossed.
I know, you know, time will tell, but look thoughtful right now. We're looking forward to an update after.
Yeah, me too.
So the the regional school district planning board chugs along. Uh they'll, they'll likely be some additional public meetings. Uh the tentative October twenty-third date for a vote uh is still being held. Um the state's giving some final feedback on on the agreement in the warrant. Uh language and all of that, and we'll keep you updated. Um Steve Soul, Steve Bannon and I, we're gonna drive to Boston on Monday. Uh for the MSBA board meeting or or owner's project manager. Thing where they they approve the owner's project manager. Um we were told uh we could participate by Zoom, so no lobster rules for us. And uh and but it also saves us like a five-hour round-trip drive, which is a blessing. Uh so we'll give you an update after that, but that meeting, I think it's two o'clock on on Monday, that that will do by Zoom. Um in policy subcommittees, there is a brief update to policy J I C F D. And occasionally we get updates that are attorney or lawyer advise. Um if you look at this, and this is the first reading. Um in the middle of the second page, the word obligated changed to encouraged. And in the middle of the third page, um the time of the investigation. Being completed changed to from within fourteen school days to promptly. Um those are, I think, the only.
Inviables.
Inviables, right? Um the viables just struck, stricken, whatever, uh removed, right? Uh so those are the changes, it's the first reading. Um this is coming to us directly because it's it's attorney advised.
Yep, buildings and grounds.
Have not met.
Okay, super nines evaluation has not met, technology has not met, finance up to me.
I agree, met um before the meeting today, kicked off our our um budget cycle for this year. Um heard presentations um from uh the buildings, grounds, the capital end, or the buildings, grounds end. And the tech end, um which were very informative, very technical, and probably too technical for me to summarize now. Um and the big takeaway, I think, is, you know, we had some challenges this past year. Um in terms of the, you know, uh cap, emergency capital expenditures with the the power issue and the. Um uh the, yeah. Geothermal, thank you, um and that's gonna have some fill over into this budget cycle as well, just because of things we've got moved around. Um and we have a set schedule for um the meetings going forward, and Bob Peter said at the meeting. Um uh that here, you're being will circle out all those committee members, so you folks know what issues we've been spoken at in specific, planned some meetings. So you can either chime in beforehand or come if you want, so, oh, now we can get into the individual building level stuff. Um so you'll, you'll know um like tomorrow morning when those are all rescheduled.
Okay, communication and self-committee will meet, clearly, yes. Peter, personnel report, kind of extensive as you would expect.
Yeah, so the um in in addition to Myra, the other new hire. Um for a full-time position is Sarah Martin as a as a kindergarten teacher. Uh and 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 we welcome her, a a large number of of paraprofessionals, some reassignments. Uh some resignations, um and then a whole ton of extracurricular appointments. Uh many of them tied to uh grants and and other things. Uh they're not all expensive, they're tied to grants.
Okay, anything under old or new business?
Um Steve, in regards to the regional school district planning board.
Yes.
I just wanna point out to people who are listening in. Um Jake Urbanwine was the head of it.
Yes.
Came out with a report on Sunday night that was an answer to what I would call misinformation. Okay, and I would urge people to read that because he addresses some major issues that have become kind of um misinformed. In regards to uh transportation, enrollment, and um some other issues, so um finance. So I thought that that would be good for people to know um in regards to making sure that the public gets a a full account of information.
Yeah, that was in response to a meeting that that really had many historic background to it. It was select board members and finance committee members from all eight towns, which I don't ever remember all sitting in one room. And there was a lot of discussion, and some of that discussion led to facts that maybe were in error. And that was, that was Jake's.
In error or the result of an intentional disinformation campaign?
In error, uh is I think what I said, and I'll stick to that. And um Jake did an excellent job in putting facts out there that uh were facts.
Yeah.
Hard to dispute, not impossible, but but so um. I don't know if that's on our website, because Bill referenced it, unless you subscribe to Ilen Ullies or know Jake, it's probably should put it on our website. Put it under Clio, I finally found that.
Maybe I'll just send it as an email.
There's our communications man. We're looking for low-hanging fruit here.
Any public comment? And by unanimous consent, we are adjourned.